You're stretching it already today, aren't you?
All right. Twenty-eight October and Councillor Pivoy is just right there. Thank you, Councillor, for being here.
I do.
So we will start off on...
Ebola.
Yeah, I've got Ebola.
We will start off on council meeting. All right. Councillor Edmonds, would you please start us with the word of prayer, please? Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet this night. Thankful for the opportunity we have to serve the citizens of Cartson. We ask that as we meet, we may be able to make wise decisions that will be meaningful to all. We're thankful for all these things, and we say this something in the name of our Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we have the agenda. And we have an addition to the agenda under fourteen, and it will be item fourteen C. Is land purchased. All right? So with this addition, I need approval of the agenda. Thank you, Councillor Pivoy. All in favour? Thank you. We need to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of October the fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. It was a very lengthy meeting, if you remember. And there was quite a lot of meat discussed that night, so...
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Councillor Bantry. Any questions regarding the minutes? Okay, all in favour? Thank you. All right, we could go to business arising. Bylaw sixteen twenty-six, a smoking bylaw. If you remember, we had approved the first reading. We now have added some clauses regarding the e-cigarette vaporizing as requested by Councillor Edmonds. So before we move to second and third reading, we need to have a motion to add those clauses to that bylaw, sixteen twenty-six.
Question on that. What have other communities been doing in regards to this? I haven't, I mean, I've seen lots of stuff on that, but I just wondered what other communities are doing. Have they proclaimed that a health hazard and all that kind of stuff? Or what's going on?
Councillor Edmonds?
Red Deer is outlawed.
Right.
Vancouver's looking into it. Ontario's looking into doing it as a province-wide thing.
Okay.
The biggest problem is there's no long-term effects established because it's a brand-new thing. And so they're trying to analyze what this vapor is and whether or not it's going to have a long-term effect. I would think anything you take into your lungs is going to have an effect on the...
Yeah, the chemicals, sometimes. Basically still a tobacco...
No, it's just like steam that comes out of their mouth.
Correct.
And that's about ten times the amount of what you would get with cigarettes. So it's very undecided right now, but Red Deer has outlawed it.
So, Councillor Edmonds, do you want to put a motion forward to add the clauses since you brought this item forward?
Yeah, I'll put it. I'm looking forward to include the vaporizing e-cigarettes in the bylaw sixteen twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions, comments? Okay, all in favour? Thank you. Now, we need to move the second reading for this bylaw.
I'll move.
Councillor Bantry?
Second reading of bylaw sixteen twenty-six. Smoking bylaw in town of Cartson.
Okay, all in favour? Thank you. And we now need third reading to approve the reading.
I'll move that, go around to third reading on bylaw sixteen twenty-six.
Okay, thank you. All in favour? Okay, this motion, this bylaw is now in place. Now, bylaw sixteen twenty-seven was to regulate the committee in Bloom Committee. The issue that we had with this one was the number of staff that were attached to that committee. What we need to do, we need to remove the town staff as members. And then move second reading. Councillor Pivoy?
I had a little discussion with Tara just before so that I could understand what the implications were. And she suggested that she'd set this up very similar to the Parks and Recreation Committee, where the staff are kind of integral part of the committee. And I know on the communities in Bloom, particularly Lloyd takes a very active part in, you know, in the activities of the committee. So we could go either way. You know, it's not necessary that we remove them from the committee. Or, you know, we could have them, you know, just be there as an advisory role, or we could leave them on it, like Sister Tara said, is very similar to the way that the Parks and Recreation Committee set up.
The issue is that they're not voting members, right? They cannot be voting members, that's the issue.
They can't be, or they just aren't, because...
There should not be.
Mayor, I think as a council, we should not be determining where our town staff is put on these committees. I think that should be up to the administration of the town, of the council. And if the administration feels like they can have one or two members on that committee, great. And we need to dictate whether they are voting members or non-voting members.
They're non-voting members, there should be no voting.
But I don't think that we should get involved in the actual appointment of town staff. That should be left up to our CAO administration.
I agree with Councillor Bantry on that myself, too.
I really can see the value of having members on the committee, but the committee in Bloom had a fairly large number of staff. We had Lloyd, we have Randy Russell, and we have Tara, and we have Lloyd, which is four members at that time with twelve meetings, that's eight hours of staff that is taken for one meeting. It's a lot of manpower. What I really think, Councillor, would be probably more useful to our committee, of which I'm a volunteer, is to have them on an ad hoc basis. So if we have a project, for example, that includes recycling or whatever, then we know who the source of information is, which is Lloyd.
Well, they can be there as an advisory, in an advisory capacity.
Right. But to have them formally there at every meeting, it's a bit much. But that they are there as the support to that committee, yes, I believe that is a role for us. But to be there as aid of manpower, the four of them, it's a lot of manpower.
Taking the time, their time for the meetings is...
Right, yeah, I think. Marion?
Madam Chairman, one of the other issues here is it kind of blurs the line between governance and administration as well when you have staff serving on a council committee. So I think that's an important part of this as well. We are there in an advisory capacity, so...
Councillor Barnes?
I guess the question I have is why do we need so many town staff on that? If we have community members at large and councillors on that, why is it we need three or four town staff on there? Two would be plenty.
Yeah, it's not really, it's really the nature of the committee that they're, you know, the things that the communities in Bloom do covers kind of a broad spectrum of things, but I'm fine if we would like to just put those as an advisory, you know, members in an advisory role, but not as voting members. Because, you know, I know some kind of like Randy very often really can't make it to the meetings because he's, you know, very busy with parks and recreation, occasionally he does make it, especially if we ask him. And so if we was to give them that freedom to, you know, not necessarily, you know, be obligated to be there, but, you know, if we need them to be there for, you know, to give us advice, then we could have them come.
I think what we need to also realize that if we have that committee set up properly, we should have at least eight members of the community, or even of the county, joining us. And so we could get some expertise from those people as well. Right now, we have a skeleton. And this is where the, I can see your angst a little bit, but I really think if we set it up like Tiber set up theirs, have a wider pool of people helping us volunteers, I think then we will feel definitely more comfortable, knowing that we still have advisory capacity with those members of staff.
Yeah, we could, we reach out to, you know, the Historical Society, because, you know, Historic Preservation or Cultural Heritage Preservation is part of the communities in Bloom, you know, we reach out definitely to Parks and Recreation.
But what we need to do is every time we have an agenda which will have to be set up earlier on, but not at the other meeting, if we have that ahead of us, then we will know which person should be there to invite. To invite, yeah, okay. So, Councillor...
Just a question, we brought up the concern of having paid administrative staff on committees where they vote, and I think, you know, one of the main concerns there is that, you know, they could influence and then maybe even vote for a project that would increase their, you know, hours or reduce their specific, you know, employment position.
They're not likely to.
Yeah, no, I understood. So I guess what I was thinking is, you know, if we're taking a hard-line stand on, hey, that's inappropriate, we might need to look at some of our other committees and see where maybe that line is being crossed elsewhere. I know, you know, we have some great staff members on several committees, including, you know, FCSS and, you know, et cetera. You know, I don't have the lists in front of me. So, you know, I would hate to have one rule on this committee and then be breaking it on a bunch of other committees.
Thanks. Are you making a good point, Madam Chairman?
All council committees, the staff members that are assigned to those committees are there in an advisory role only, and they do not have voting rights, other than this proposed committee. So we have staff that work with the committees, but not in a voting capacity on those committees.
Yeah.
So FCSS is an example.
Okay, one more comment, and then we need to...
Tara mentioned it was similar to the Parks and Recreation, so I just, and a question, what does the, how is the Parks and Recreation Committee set up?
Randy's there as an advisory capacity.
He's not a voting member.
He's not a voting member, so, okay, well, then that's fine.
Turn takes a minute.
We'll just set this up as, these members as an advisory, as an advisory capacity, and not as voting members.
So then, just for clarification on this one, what we're proposing is that the sections in yellow be either removed or amended out, is that...
Is to remove the town staff members as appointed members.
And reduce the membership to eight, rather than to have it as twelve?
Eleven.
It's at eleven right now, so take those three off, and then it goes down.
So it should, so the committee shall consist of eight members, and then we should remove section two, D, E, and N.
I'd be happy to move that second reading with those amendments.
We need to first of all do a motion to amend?
Which I'm happy to move.
Okay, so, Councillor Pivoy, move to remove the town staff members' appointment from the list of members on the committee of committees in Bloom. Okay?
Just a question before we move to that. With the other committee bylaws, I mean, we still like them to come, so are they, should they be mentioned or totally deleted and we just assume that they're going to come and be advisory to the committee? Do we totally remove them from the bylaw?
Yeah, we, my suggestion would be that we provide administrative support where required, so I think to have specific people listed is a bit more limiting than what we want to do.
Okay, so we just, all right.
So all in favour? Thank you. All right, now we need to move second reading.
Move second reading? I'll move second reading of bylaw sixteen twenty-seven?
Non-miscellaneous Bloom Committee. All in favour? Thank you. And we need to move third reading.
I'll move third reading.
And Councillor Creed moves third reading for bylaw sixteen twenty-seven, Communities in Bloom Committee. All in favour? Thank you. All right, thank you, Councillor Creed, for your interest in that bylaw, appreciate that. All right, let's go to section seven, request for decision. As you saw, I kind of circulated this paper for November twenty-fourth, Committee Awareness Evening. We would like to have some councillor, but we don't need all, from six thirty to eight p.m. Some of you are already going to be manning a booth. I know that Councillor Edmond is, Councillor Bantry is, Councillor Creed is. And Councillor Pivoy, if you are able to give us thirty minutes, it's okay. If not, it's not to worry about. I'll be there.
I can stay longer as well, too.
Okay. So we will give that to administration. All right, thank you very much. We will have that evening presentation, a kind of pamphlet on EMS, that is a little bit the focus we're going to have on emergencies...
Emergency management.
You may spend some time with that.
Emergency management.
Management, yeah, I should call it.
Councillor Barnes, were you able to help?
See that?
Yes.
On here? Yeah, I put myself down from six thirty to closing.
Maybe you want to pass it down to administration.
Yeah.
I'll be able to help, but I don't know what time period.
Okay. So there will be different type of gadgets that will be given to people who come unimaged into the management. Well, there will be flashlights and a few blankets.
I love gadgets.
Pens.
All right. Seven B is an interesting project that the Carstens County is trying to put together on a study for regional water line. And what they're requesting from our town is to give them a letter of support to allow them to have an Alberta Community Partnership grant. So, Councillor Barnes?
I'll move that we send a letter of support for that grant.
Okay. Regarding the regional water line study of the Carstens County. Any questions? All in favour?
Is this, just a minute, is this in conjunction with the South Co-op Water Line?
This is not...
What's the situation?
This is not the same project. This project has to do with a line that would come from Levitt area, from Carstens to Levitt, and from Carstens to Edna, if I understand properly.
All the way up to Mountain View, actually.
Yeah.
So we're not extending South Water Co-op line to Edna? Are you involving that?
It's a study.
The study is being done under the previous grant application that we supported back in, I believe it was June. This is a further study for, they want to look at a line going west of town out to Levitt, Mountain View area, and they're also looking at a line in the McGrath area. So this allows them some grant funding. It's simply to conduct the study. And part of that study would require that they would be looking at our plant capacities and all of those kind of things as well.
Good, thank you.
I mean, let's face it, sooner or later, we have to look at the regional water issue in the future. Not now, but in the future.
Well, we're looking at a shared water usage right now with the county, and I think they need to step up to the plate and look at our plant situation and say, hey, you know, if we're going to have more water from the Cartson, we're willing to put in X amount of dollars until the upgrade of their plants will...
Well, all that will be part of the study. But the plant is another issue.
Just one other thing I'd suggested to the mayor, that perhaps part of the letter of support would be a request that we remain informed through the process so that we're able to provide some additional input and we're aware of the process.
And I also said that it would be good if we let them know that we would like to know about the result of the first study on the water.
Does that need to be in the motion?
If you so wish.
I'd like to have that in the motion, included in the motion.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
Yes, I am.
I'll accept your friendly amendment.
That way we're totally in the, in the loop of what's happening.
All right, so the motion will have to be amended to include feedback to the town regarding the two water project studies.
Right.
So... All in favour? Thank you. All right, November eleventh council meeting. As you could well realize, November eleventh is already a fairly busy day. So what we suggest is that we have the meeting on November the tenth, since we're already there at two o'clock, meeting with Mr. Hillier. So this way, if we could have a meeting afterwards and maybe could go from three to five at the latest, that would be maybe a way to extend that meeting. Have the meeting from two to three with Mr. Hillier, and then three to five for council. That would be just about three hours' work. That work?
But that would be on a Monday, then.
Yes. So if we finish it by five, it would...
So then it would be done by November tenth?
Okay, yes. The other option is November the eighteenth, but it's not the best option, because November the twenty-fifth is a regular meeting, number, yeah, November twenty-fifth. So it's a little bit too much.
Is the tenth the committee hall meeting?
No, no.
It's a regular council meeting.
And then they need to hold the first one now.
But we need to advertise now, we need two weeks to advertise, Marion, am I correct?
No, just twenty-four hours. But we like to advertise for as long as possible.
Okay, so how many of you feel you could be November tenth and complete council meeting?
That would be my preference, I should say.
Yeah, I have something else on the tenth, but I'll make a change.
Councillor Pivoy and myself might be involved in a Schluck Foundation financial meeting on November tenth. We haven't got the final dates yet, but that will go later in the evening.
Okay.
Right now, it's leaning toward Monday the third, but it could land on the tenth, depending on, and we'll vote against the tenth, so we'll help sort it out.
So all in favour of November tenth? Thank you.
At what time?
At three o'clock.
Three o'clock?
Unless it's...
Will we be there at two?
Okay, thank you. Now, November eleventh ceremony, it has been traditional for the deputy mayor to be the MC. Last year, we did a little bit of switch. Councillor Barnes was the MC, and Councillor Barnes, it would be your chance to do so this year. Are you able to do so?
Sure.
Thank you. So the staff will give you all the information you need to do that, you know, you will have to...
That's not a problem either. You might not like what you get at the end of it.
It's too solemn and it's an occasion, so we, Councillor.
I agree.
The Historical Society would like you to announce at the end of the program, before we go to the Senate tap, they will be serving hot chocolate and showing a movie.
Cookies?
Okay, give me a chance to understand. I thought that the whole ceremony will take place inside the high school, as it was last year, so...
Then they'll come down to the Senate tap at the end at the...
At the end.
Or will they?
No, no, they do the ceremony at the high school, they do the Senate tap ceremony.
A temporary Senate tap.
This is a portable Senate tap.
Yeah, because it's easier for people, depending on the weather.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, for the last two years, the Legion has asked that the ceremony be done right at the high school, because it's becoming too difficult for their veterans to be able to march to the Senate tap. And the weather tends to be an issue, so...
Not this year, it's been promised.
Okay, so, Councillor...
The man promised it.
Councillor Edmonds, then, help me understand, where will that...
It'll be at the museum.
Okay, so we will still announce that, and people can go to the museum and partake of the displays.
Maybe showing a movie, The Battle of Britain.
Oh, perfect.
It's a documentary, you know.
It's a good movie.
Okay, so...
It's not the full-length movie, it's a documentary, it's fifty-two minutes, which it's actually better than the Hollywood version.
Councillor Barnes, that will be thought of your announcement.
And then in the evening, they're having a musical evening at Tanner Center, and singing and listening to songs from the nineteen forties.
Yeah, to the warrior.
I'll make the assumption that the administration will have all the...
They'll take some up.
They might not have that part.
Would you be right up on that?
That'd be great, thank you.
Now, there was a little, there was a little concern on that, and I just wanted to mention that Tobias Terrell was concerned that we might be interfering with the Legion luncheon that they have afterwards, but not everybody goes to that luncheon, it's, you know, VIPs, dignitaries and stuff, and a few people that want to be there. But families and stuff generally don't go out there. And this is for families to go to the, over here to the museum and do all that different stuff. And so when Tobias heard that, he was fine with it after that, it's a portal.
Okay, all right.
It'll be a great night.
Is it, is it going to show one at one time?
They're just going to show it.
It's just going to show the...
And at what time, Councillor?
Well, I would say probably about eleven-thirty.
Yeah. So it'll be right after.
Right. Eleven-thirty, noonish?
Yeah, okay, but the...
And then at seven o'clock at the Tanner in the evening, an evening of entertainment.
Okay, now, the luncheon at the Legion never really starts until about quarter after twelve or twelve-thirty or something like that, so it's still a possibility for people. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Now, we have a guest for the November eleventh.
The speaker? Yeah, we've invited Gordon Brinkhurst to speak, he is a veteran.
Okay, so that is fine. All right, seven C, electrical department digger truck. Let's see, we have our electrical department in Foch Charles there. Would you like to help us with this one, or do you want to see what we're going to do with it?
If you have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer.
Thank you. All right, Councillor Bantry?
As I review this request, I'm prepared to make a motion that we go ahead and purchase the two thousand and seven digger truck. In the amount of forty, or no, in the year using the twenty, forty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one from the Iraq, Iraq reserve, and sixty-one thousand one eighty-nine from the unused balance in the two thousand and fourteen budget for the electrical capital.
Thank you, Councillor. But will give us all the information we need. Any questions? Councillor Creed?
I think it's a bit of a no-reign, right? The one question I do have, is there a salvage value to the existing digger truck? That wasn't mentioned in the request.
I would estimate anywhere between zero and ten thousand.
Okay, so...
Well, it's not mentioned.
Fairly minimal salvage value for the existing truck.
Okay, I really think that a truck is needed to be up to speed with coal, and we need to protect the safety of our electricians that are doing all the changes in our town, so I think there's value in having that.
Has that vehicle, the newer vehicle, has it been inspected?
No.
Checked over and make sure? Checked over and make sure that it works?
No, currently that vehicle right there is sitting in Texas as we speak. That is one that we are entertaining. As of four hours ago, I was able to come across one that is in Edmonton right now, so it's, we don't have to deal with import and all that. And
It's at the same time?
It is actually about $4,000 cheaper than that cost there.
Could the chassis from this present Digger Truck be used in our fleet somewhere? Like a
No, it's not.
You know? Chassis is no good.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the table. So depending of the type of purchase you're doing, should we then review the motion to say, "Are to"?
No. Just say, "To purchase a 2000, or"
Because you gave some specific, you gave some specific in dollar.
Yeah, it's just where the funding would come from.
Right.
If we were under budget, we would just use less than
Okay, all right, fine. So, all in favor?
Just a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No problem. I, so, yeah, you're good. I just, to sort of clarify, I mean, obviously, we want to buy a newer used, but what would a new truck run?
250.
300,000.
Yeah, an amount that's a little bit prohibitive at this time.
Sure, I just wanted to know that comparison so we can see.
And as a note, the one that is in Edmonton is a 2011.
Really? Is this the one that drills the holes?
Yes.
Yeah, the auger.
The auger, so you say Digger.
That's what we need, we need to do that to replace all the holes in this town.
So just, would you have an estimate on what the life expectancy of the truck that you would be purchasing would actually be then?
If you go on the average of all the other utilities, they base theirs anywhere from 10 to 15 years.
The current truck is 36.
79.
For how many years?
Pretty good.
79.
Did we get it new?
An international harvest or?
No, we did not get it new.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying it's 36.
So they made it last 36.
I guess you're going to assume that there'll be parts for this one for sale in the future.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor? Thank you. And you got yourself a truck. Make it last.
So don't work it in your yard.
All right, at this point, our regular meeting will need to be stopped for a little while. We need to have a motion to adjourn to our organizational meeting.
I want to adjourn to our organizational meeting.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All right, so if you take, if you move to your agenda for the organizational meeting for Calston Town Council of October 28, 2014, we will call this meeting to order at this point. And what we will need to do, once you have it on your screen, is to review the bylaw 1628.
Where is it?
Now, quick question. Are there significant changes or is this pretty much a duplicate of last year's?
It's significant changes and there was a copy in your package that noted the changes.
Counselor, if you look at it, you, I'm sorry, I want to
I was looking for him.
But there is a copy that has red, red kind of inserts.
I don't know if I got that, but it's fine.
I tried to find mine too, so.
Okay, maybe
Can you show Counselor Barnes?
I got my background or?
You gotta go back.
It's on, it's right at the back of the first section.
This one here?
Scroll that way. Too far, go back to council meeting. Scroll that way.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, I didn't see any.
Do you mind? Uh
I don't know where the changes are. I've got the bylaw.
All right.
What?
Graham, sure.
Oh, you know where the changes are.
It'll be good right to the end.
Oh.
If you want me to
Organizational meeting, I'm looking at 1628, I'm asking what the changes are.
Yeah, me too.
It's just below the
I'll scroll.
It's in the same document under
Scroll at the end of your motion, of your bylaw and below that motion, that bylaw, so there is the original bylaw. Okay, so if you look at that bylaw, maybe then if you didn't have a chance to look through it
Well, I read the earlier one, I just missed this.
That's all right. If you wanted to know where the changes were, there were, there were changes essentially, a few cosmetic ones with wording, but the essential changes are under section 2, no, under section 3. 3 is now removed. It talks about petition being presented to council, but in fact, this is already part of the MGA, so it does not need to be inside this bylaw because it's already covered in lines and detail in the MGA. For your information, this bylaw was reviewed by legal and to help us tidy, tidy up that whole, that whole section, there is another section that has been amended, Part 5, Order of Proceedings in Camera. And there again, the way it was written is to help you understand that we function under FOIP. Okay, so that anything that FOIP allows us to do in camera, we will do in camera. Okay? Further down, if you look at Part 7, Appointment and Organization of Committees of Council, we need, we needed to revamp this section since we now have the Committee of the Hall, which is a committee of council. Okay? Any other changes, as I say?
Madam Chairman, there's one in wording, if you look under the Committee of the Hall, it's 2C.
2C that needs to be said, okay, the function of the Committee of the Hall is to discuss and debate, there is a typo there that needs to be taken out. The details of matters brought before council prior to motion being, instead of saying "Table," the word will be reading "Presented," which is more clear.
Yeah, 'cause I thought table being put off.
Table, yeah, exactly. Table meant exactly the opposite of what it is. Okay?
So we'll get that in the next package of information?
So this is
When this is finalized, right, it'll say proceed?
Well, if you look at
I think we have to vote on it tonight.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have to.
Within two weeks, they'll have this approved.
But you already have an procedure bylaw in place. This is just an amendment, so if you weren't to pass all three readings tonight, it's fine because you have one in place already. It's just an opportunity to review it at the organizational meeting.
So if you want to pass the first reading, it's fine and we can always pass the other two readings later on, so, and do it that way.
I'll take a motion to pass first reading of bylaw 1628, council procedures.
Bylaw amendment.
Bylaw amendment.
Thank you. Any questions? Seen on, all in favor? Okay, so
My only question on that, we then have to go into an organizational meeting again to
No, it would be brought to a regular meeting. Does that work?
Yeah, it might be clear, sorry now that Counselor Barfus brought that up. It might be clearer if we just hold the readings to go, when we go back into the regular council, so if we can withdraw that vote, I apologize.
Okay, so do you want to do it in regular council meeting?
Yeah, I think it just might be clearer if it's in a regular council meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. So hang on to it when we go back into a meeting. Okay, item 3, review and approval of council committee assignment. As per your wishes, we have not changed the assignment. You still have the same. You asked me to keep those assignments at least for two years, so they will be valid until next October 2015. Okay? The Committee of the Hall Chairman assignment. Oh, yeah, we need a motion, sorry. Counselor Barnes, you made a motion?
I'll make that motion to leave the committees as they are until October 2015.
Votes and committee assignments.
Vote, yeah, vote and committee assignments, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Committee of the Hall Chairman assignment, as you could see from the bylaw 1628, we had to kind of rework the wording to make sure that we now cover eight months period and it's normally
Rather than six.
Rather than six. And it normally is on a rotation basis and we had Counselor Barfus, we had Counselor Barnes, the next rotation would be Counselor Banbury. What we need to do is approve Counselor Barnes and Counselor Banbury to cover the period from July 2014 right up to October 2015, okay, in their rotations. Counselor Barnes started in July 2014.
And I go to what?
And you go right up to February, February 2015 and Counselor Banbury, you will start in March 2015 and you will go right up to October 2015.
Question, did Counselor Barfus get his full eight months?
Yes.
Did you?
Yep.
Good.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve those assignments, deputy mayor assignment. Counselor Pivoy, make the motion to approve the deputy mayor assignment of Counselor Barnes from July 2014 to February 2015 and Counselor Banbury from March 2015 to October 2015.
But that's a leap year, then Dennis gets an extra day.
2016 is a leap year.
Oh, all right.
No, I get an extra day.
There he is.
I have a bunch of checks for him to sign that day.
We will approve the other assignment as they come on next year. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Now, the meeting dates, we need to, date and time, we need to
Deputy Mayor schedule, please.
To approve the whole schedule, is that what you mean?
To approve the schedule, yeah.
Isn't that what we just did?
Well, no, we just approved the deputy mayor's.
The council, oh, CCW.
Okay, so you want, you want us to approve the whole of the, the whole of the assignment? Okay.
And I can
Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, I'll move that as well, the whole assignment.
That's the deputy mayor's assignment.
Yes, I move to accept the deputy mayor's assignments as designated here.
As presented in the package.
Up to 2017.
From October 2013 to October 2017. All right. All in favor? Thank you. Sorry about that. Yes, Committee of the Hall.
Mayor, can I, can I back up a little bit on the committee assignments?
Go ahead.
What is happening with the 2015 bylaw?
That is a very good point. We will get started in January to get it going. We have the money from the block trial. They have not asked us to return the money and they have allowed us to change the name from Calston, Moses Lake Power to Calston Cannon Power.
Okay, and the committee assignment's the same, Counselor Creed and myself?
Yes.
And you?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you okay with it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don't bother.
Okay. Let's go to item 5. Council Committee of the Hall, we presently meet the first Tuesday of the month at 4 o'clock. Is it still okay with all of you?
Just hang on a second here, I've got four and I just get five.
Oh, I think it's just in the background.
Is it in the background?
No. Nope.
It's here, Counselor.
Oh, on the main agenda, okay.
Mayor, we talked, we talked about the
We did present
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that. Okay?
Mayor, I thought it was, I thought it was brought up at one council meeting. The agendas for our CCWs is getting more and more all the time. Do we need to have a CCW and a council meeting alternate, such as Raymond does?
We need to have two?
Yes, I do. So I have a meeting every week?
They have a meeting every week. Personally, I like the way we're doing it and I prefer to have a little bit longer three weeks than a shorter four months. That's just me though.
And that, that's my preference as well.
How is the rest feeling about it?
Well, the concern is we're, we're always looking at extensions and so forth, so we, we need to somehow reduce the agenda or, or do a little bit faster business.
And I'm all for faster business, but I would much rather have extensions and go longer. That, that one night is filled up already for me, I'd rather not kill another night.
Counselor Creed, how do you feel?
Oh, I definitely agree. I'd rather do it the way that we're doing it now.
Counselor Edmonds?
Longer than more.
I'm sorry?
Longer than more.
Same as this.
One thought though.
Counselor Barnes? Let's try to see how we
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the way we are. I, I do have concerns the same way as Counselor Banbury, that we're, you know, we're piling up and it is a long meeting and I'm okay.
I just think, we can use as our gauge the county meetings. If we ever start getting longer than those, we'll ever reassess.
Okay, let's not compare, so better to keep up or think in house, okay? All right. Okay, so Marion, it appears that the desire is to keep it the way it is. Regular council meeting time, 5 o'clock, still works for you or do you want them earlier?
I think 5 is fine for, especially for those of us who, Counselor Banbury's got to come in from Leadbridge and Counselor Barfus and I are still working in there.
Okay, so 5 o'clock
So is there Counselor Pivoy?
Okay, so there will be no change for that. We will need, but hold on a second, we need to look at the amendments that need to be made here, okay? We have here, for your information and also for our vote by motion, changes that may need to occur. November 10th, we dealt with it.
Yeah.
That's done. We are proposing to cancel the December 23rd meeting for the obvious reason. Is that all right with all of you?
Yes.
To take a little bit
So we'll just have the one meeting and the CCW meeting.
You would have two meetings instead of three that month. Would that work?
I think
Okay, all right, so this one is fine. Go then to the summertime. It has been traditional to have one meeting a month in the summer months of July and August. Here, the proposed time, and normally we try to keep it four weeks apart, so the proposed dates are July the 14th and August the 11th at 4 o'clock. How would that work for all of you? Some of you might be there, some of you might not. That's a little bit the story of the summertime, but we understand that. That's a little bit the story of the summertime, but we understand that.
I guess I'm still kind of concerned about the CCW meeting, not having that CCW meeting. How does that affect our council meeting if we don't have opportunity to discuss things that are coming up, that are going to be held in that meeting? How do we deal with that?
Okay, that, that is a very good point. From what we experienced, I've done it about, what, four years, full time now, from what we experienced, the summer months are really much lighter in terms of business. Marion, am I correct to say that?
Yeah, a lot of people are out of town through the summer months. They're not focused on kind of what's happening.
Committees...
And then come September, they'll kind of get back into the routine again.
Committees don't really happen. There's a lot of things that is shut down during the summertime regarding that type of work.
I guess if, if we had to have a special meeting, we had to, we could do that, but...
If we had to, we could.
If we needed it. I kind of like the summer off, like, this one meeting was good, I liked it, but it worked well, yeah.
Would you be agreeable to that?
Marion, that's one of the reasons why I believe in the past we've started at four o'clock as well.
Yes, to make them a little bit longer.
Because maybe it's going to go an hour longer than regular, then you're still home at a decent hour, right?
Does that work?
Still wide out.
Yeah.
Can you give me the dates again?
It's July the 14th, 4:00 PM, and August 11th at 4:00 PM.
On the sheet, yeah?
Yes.
Oh, on the right hand side.
Now, we also have the dates for the AUMA conference in Calgary in September, and September the 29th is the date that we would have council...
What's it, what's it it would be?
There's five Tuesday in September.
The AUMA is on the 23rd, starts the 23rd?
Correct, and we cannot have council that day.
So we just move, just move it to the 29th?
To the 29th.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that work?
Yeah. Is that coming right off of AUMA then?
Pretty, pretty well, yeah. Pardon me?
That, that's coming pretty much right off of AUMA to, to the, to the next Tuesday for council meeting, right?
Would that be a strain on your...
And that's what I'm wondering, you know, because then you've got to get an agenda, you know, on Friday.
I would have the majority of the agenda put together prior to AUMA, and then the staff would just complete it, anything that came in during that week.
Okay. All right.
What was the dates of AUMA again?
It's the 20, it starts on the 24th of September, 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th.
And if there's...
23rd, 24th.
Well, then if there's educational classes, then it'd be the day before and after.
22nd.
Yeah, and it is in Calgary.
Yes, it's in Calgary. Okay. The, the last meeting we would like to look at is December 22nd, 2015, and is to cancel that meeting also. In doing that right now, it allows us to publish that and to keep a reminder for people.
Well, and then, and then people can make plans for their summer vacation on some of those as well.
Okay. All right, so if you're in favor of all those amendments to our regular council meetings regarding the dates and time, we need a motion.
I will move that we accept the schedule as, as presented for canceling the December 23rd meeting of this year and the December 22nd meeting of next year, having one meeting in July and August, council meeting in July 14th and August 11th, and the AUMA in September, council meeting moved to the September the 29th. I think that covers them.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so this is done. Now, item six has to do with the code of our conduct for councillors, which we had previously visited last year, in fact. It was in your, in your orientation package. If you look at four, it asks us to become familiar with any procedural bylaw. If you look at your orientation package, this is where you would be able to refresh your knowledge of procedural bylaws, okay? So that is an important code of conduct. You want to review it along with the communication policies. Those are good reviews that we should have. To also go back to that motion that we have tabled for a few minutes, 1628, become quite familiar with it. I really realized that myself, I didn't follow the letter of that bylaw when it comes to delegations. When it comes to delegation, you will see that before we can do, deal with a delegation, we need two thirds of the majority of council to accept to discuss the matter at that meeting. Otherwise, it is pushed back to the next meeting. So we will, in the future, make sure that we'll deal with this. Okay? We need to adjourn back to our regular meeting, so I need a motion to reconvene. Councillor?
I made that motion to reconvene. Just a question, wait a minute, do we need to accept policy C91, or is that just there for...
No.
It's just, we put that on the organizational meeting, it's just something, it's a good annual review of that policy for...
Okay, so we have, we have a motion to reconvene. All in favor? Thank you. So we're reconvening to the town council meeting, the regular town council meeting. Let's go to item 10.
Madam Chair.
Yes, oh, we need to deal with that motion. Okay, all right, so let's deal with that motion. Oh, it was canceled, councillor Bantry said that. Are you available for that motion, councillor, or are you busy?
No, I'm, I'm ready for that motion.
Okay. Is, is...
You're moving first reading?
Yes.
Is moving first reading of bylaw 1628, which is council procedure bylaw amendment. So, any questions? No? So, all in favor? Thank you, so we move first reading. We will move second and third reading at the next meeting. Okay?
Just one question...
Go ahead.
For consideration at that time. In part seven, number four, it says in the absence of an appointed member of council on a committee, the mayor shall be the ex officio member of all committees. And I'm just thinking that if you are available, if we shouldn't just add a little skip there that you could assign a different councillor, in your absence.
The council normally is able to assign their own chair at that point?
Right, exactly.
No, this is acting as ex officio, is the point you're...
Yes.
Okay, so...
So the council would choose...
It's committee of, of council, it's like CCW.
Right.
But other committees, you, you can...
Yeah, I am ex officio.
In the absence of another councillor is the intent, correct?
Yes.
So what you're saying is if the mayor is absent, could she appoint another person to represent her?
I'm just wondering if that would be worth writing in there, or if it's too cumbersome?
I don't think it's necessary.
It would fall to the deputy mayor to act in the case of the absence of the mayor, which the deputy mayor then gets the same authority as the mayor in her absence. Which, you kind of have an alternative over.
Yeah, fair enough.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's great.
But, good for pointing that, you're right, but the deputy mayor is normally there as a backup.
Good plan.
So it's a backup of the backup.
We've got two, two levels of...
Okay. All right. The financial report.
Okay, so we're out of here now?
No.
There is, there is none at this, at this time. What you have, you have budget documents, all of them. The committee and other reports, you have town council, council motion list for your information. The CEO report, and Marion, thank you so much for all that wonderful work. It is quite informative, and I really feel we're getting a sense of how we will be along.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that. Any comments, any questions? You have the capital projects that are listed there, and you can see where they're at, which is...
The O report, yeah?
Yeah, and it's all part of the thing.
Just, and this, you know, might be better for Lloyd, but he's, he's got a growing number of other, and I was just looking for clarification again as to what's included in other on his painting of the curve.
Okay.
I think, well, I think it's his citations, right? The parking, the dogs, the cats, and then other, lots of...
I would have to get some clarification, because it's going to be any number of things that you need to ask to deal with.
Well, anything that doesn't fit that category.
Well, I'm just thinking, if, if a majority of those are one thing, I'd add a thing.
Yeah, I would suggest they're probably not, because we get a variety of complaints about numerous things, right? So, I mean, it might be, maybe birds, you know, I don't...
Somebody forgot to put a cover over their garments driving down the street.
Yeah, it can be, but I, I can ask him to kind of give a synopsis of what those other might be, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, like, say, if they're all falling into one little category, maybe consider adding it.
Well, it's a good point, because the numbers are fairly high in comparison to the other category, right?
Right.
Okay, now, we have the market surveillance report. Nothing has changed, but we need a motion to approve that surveillance report. Councillor Bantry, did I see you raising your hand? No?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, councillor Pivoy is approving the market surveillance report. And it's from the quarter of July 1st, 2014, to September 30th, 2014. So all in favor? Thank you.
And my hats off to those involved, that's great.
Yeah.
Question, question on the utilities, what's happening with our, cost of our utilities?
We'll discuss that tomorrow on the budget meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Under 12 questions, councillor Creed, you have a question?
Yes, in the, in the minutes, I didn't bring this up during the minutes, because the minutes are correct, but there were two, two bylaws that were, were tabled, and they were basically tabled until this meeting, and, and it is not on the agenda. So my question is, do we need to bring that back and re-table those, or extend the table until, until those bylaws come?
Okay, that's a good point. What we need to do is review the minutes and see if we table them to a specific date.
We need to this date.
So if, in that case, you're correct, we might have to re-table them to... Marion, do you have any idea when possibly, or do you want us to table it and, and leave it open? Would that be preferable?
I will have them reviewed by the November 10th meeting.
November 10th? Okay, so councillor Creed, good point.
So we could talk about it then?
Yeah.
So, so I'm just wondering, like, since they were tabled at this meeting, then they need to be discussed and then re-table to the November 10th?
Yeah, except, Marion, I don't have the exact numbers of those.
1618 and 1625.
1618 and 1625. Councillor Creed, would you please make that motion that extends? Go ahead.
I would move that we extend the tabling of those two bylaws, 1618 and 1625, to November 10th.
That's the dog bylaw.
And the traffic bylaw.
Okay. Any questions?
Good point.
All in favor? And kudos to you for picking that up. All right, now correspondence. Alberta Family Wellness Initiative, you have an invitation there from that organization, and FCSS will be present, Alexis will be present that day. I will be present that day. If you are interested in coming to that luncheon, we have a speaker. It's a very, very rare occasion to have such a prominent speaker come to a small town like ours. So just for that purpose, I would say it's worth coming. Yes. So how many of you are able to make it? Yeah, administration needs to pass it on to Alexis.
Thursday, November 6th, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM.
And is that the...
That's just during our lunch hour anyways.
Okay, so councillor Barnes?
I, maybe now's a good time to mention, my family is going to be down in Utah for a week, for that week. I'll also miss the committee of the whole.
Okay, all right, thank you for letting us know. Councillor Bantry? It's a little bit tough, yeah. Yeah. Councillor Edmonds?
Yeah, I'll be there.
And councillor...
Looks like I should be able to be there.
Councillor Creed?
I think I can be there.
And I will be there. So thank you for the support, I appreciate that.
Do we need to, is that our RSP?
Our RSP.
For us?
Yeah, Marion is going to do it. I did myself, but maybe you want to confirm. Okay. 13B, if you...
It's the Alberta Family Wellness.
13B, if you saw the report, is councillor Pivoy was there, who else was there? I was there, Marion was there, the three of us were there. So Farm Safety Development Regulation Symposium, get familiar with the changes that are being proposed. You will see there are still some sticky points where the government will have to obviously make a decision with a recommendation given to them. Okay, the next one is Farm Safety Center. The Farm Safety Center is requesting a donation of $300 for the education program. That program comes into all the schools in southern Alberta, all being included in that. We have traditionally always supported that initiative to teach safety to our children regarding farm equipment implements, et cetera. Councillor Bantry?
If that comes into the school, or into the school division, do they support it?
Yes.
Financially?
They allow that group to come to their school to do presentation. As you can see, the $300 has a far reaching goal, is to take care of the instructor, to produce material that is taken home, administration coordination, office expense, insurance, et cetera, and delivery equipment, so...
And if I heard you right, we not only supported this last year, but we budgeted for it this year, is that correct?
We always have said part of our donation.
I don't know if we didn't support it financially last year, that I could see in the budget, but, you know, it is for the greater good of citizens, I guess, in general, at best.
Safety.
Safety and children, right?
It's part of our donation lump sum that we have.
So there is room in the budget.
I'll make a motion that we, we support the Farm Safety Center with a donation of $300 taken from the general...
Donation fund.
Yeah, donation funds are...
Yeah. Okay. All right, and thank you, all in favor? Thank you. And the last item is a piece of communication from Sheila Clare.
F1.
For your information.
Thank you.
Okay? At this point, we will adjourn to go in camera.
How, do we go in camera?
Thank you. Thank you. We have to deal with a few items of land issues and communication governance. We will.